Good.
Good. Call the Monday, April twenty-second meeting to order, start the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody, all of you that are here. Can you hear me a little better out there in TV land? Good message, Chris. Just happened to go ahead and get here. Pretty short agenda today. Roll call. James present, bless his president, Heather's absent. Michelle Morrison's present. Additions, deletions to the agenda. I have approval to stamp a check with commissioner's stamp for clerk. Do we need anything else? We already have a one executive session. Is there anything we missed? Rock government. Tricia's not from that.
Yeah, let's add one more ten-minute, uh, non-elected.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I'll move to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. Public comments. Anybody want to comment?
It's in your room today, what's up?
There you go. Okay, first order of business, mock government. I was approached by a teacher in Burlingame, they would like to, uh, come next week and be involved. I told them that if they would hold an election in their classroom this week, elect commissioners, a clerk, and appoint an attorney, uh, that we could probably allow them to sit in our seats and handle a little bit of business, so we can have a little fake agenda, if that's acceptable.
I'm fine with that.
Uh, I don't know that we get any kind of motion or anything, other than it's more of a, an update type situation, and just to get it on the agenda, secure a slot. I told them, um, to be here at nine AM, so we could just secure them a slot right after the public comment.
Get ahold of their teacher and tell her to make an agenda and what they want them to discuss and...
Yeah, I told them to do that. I told them we might have some things too, uh, that we can throw in there, just stuff that we don't would deal with. Maybe some of the current events, and you and I can go through that here today. Make something up for them, I think that'd be cool. Teacher's name is Calvary Lott.
Calvary Lott?
Yes, sir. He's also the rest of the coach. Is Tricia around anywhere? I know you're listening.
She's probably playing with ducks somewhere.
Roaches.
Ducks, roaches.
A little weird.
What'll be next? Chickens that got out of her coop.
Oh, that is something that I do want to talk about though, while we're waiting for her to get here.
I was thinking we was gonna have that on, I didn't see that, but yeah.
That's one thing I forgot, we needed to have a little message her to get here. Um, I have talked with Ryan Sum and Greg Curdie, should be around here somewhere. See if we can't get him in here too. All right, let's see, where's the rest of her? So as everyone knows, tornado, two of them, they're claiming now, went through the rural portion of eastern, there he is, Osage County. So, I would have had visited with Greg, I had him write up another declaration of emergency, uh, and then we toured the damage there the day of. Thankfully, there were no deaths still, correct? You ever heard anything different?
No, sir.
Few minor injuries?
Yes, sir.
But nothing, and then, you know, of course, quite a bit of damage, so that's a tragedy in itself, but thankfully, uh, no serious injuries. We did visit with Ryan a little bit, about once everybody gets their insurance claims and gets their ducks in a row, uh, potentially having a dump day at the dump.
Why would you say ducks in a row when she walked in?
She's smart, she'll pick it up.
Speaking of ducks in a row.
So what they've done is they've created a map, correct? That kind of shows the damage and the addresses within that map, and the plan is, is for those folks to provide, uh, some sort of identification with their address and whatnot, and then that way we can help them with some of their trash disposal, is the plan. So as long as that's acceptable, I don't know, have you visited with Ryan at all about timing on that? Are you involved with that much? I know you catch up to the map.
Basically, Ryan's already moving debris, has adjusters come out and prepared to look over the properties.
Okay.
The landlords will call Ryan and they come out with their threats, they're available, and haul debris for them.
Very good. Very good. Do you have a declaration of protest?
I do, sir.
All right.
Your top needs to be answered.
We have a resolution, Heather?
Ten.
Ten?
Twenty-two-four dash ten.
I'll go ahead and read this out loud. Resolution twenty-two-four dash ten and proclamation. Proclamation of a state of local disaster emergency for Osage County, Kansas. Whereas on the sixteenth day of April, twenty-twenty-four, the Board of Ca- of Commissioners of Osage County, Kansas, finds that certain conditions have caused or evidently threatened to cause widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life or property in disaster proportion in Osage County, Kansas. Whereas such conditions have created instructions which endanger health, safety, and welfare of persons and property within the border of Osage County, Kansas. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Ca- of Commissioners of Osage County, Kansas, that the Board of County Commissioners of Osage County, Kansas, under and by virtue of the authority vested in it by KSA nineteen-seventy-six sub forty-eight dash nine thirty-two, does hereby proclaim that a state of local disaster emergency exists. It is further resolved and proclaimed that the area within the border of Osage County, Kansas, covered by this proclamation, resolution is the entire area of Osage County, Kansas. Being further resolved, said Board has ha- has all rights and or powers to perform such functions as are vested in said Board by and through the provisions of the Kansas Emergency Preparedness Act of nineteen-seventy-five as amended. It is further resolved and proclaimed that this resolution shall remain in effect for a period of seven days, unless terminated earlier or renewed by consent of the governing body, adopted by Board of Osage County Commissioners this twenty-second day of April, twenty-twenty-four. So if everyone is in a grits, we'll just need a motion to approve.
Do we need to change that date from the sixteenth to the twenty-second, or not?
Sixteenth is the day it happened.
Okay. I will...
Wes and I conversed that morning, we were in front of verbal meeting.
Okay.
And you already visited with Kate Dan and all that, everybody knows, so...
Yep.
I'll second it.
I've been looking on the damage assessments, we did, uh, windshield version that afternoon. I had some help from the folks at the, uh, United Methodist Emergency Response Group out of Topeka.
Right.
Since I never done one, they were nice enough to go down and help me out, there was three of the organization kicked down, and we took care of what we knew if we knew what.
Right. I just missed you. I was leaving their house, but you were there visiting. I just missed you. Uh, so, do you second that number?
Yes.
Okay, well, um, I guess we can call that a motion.
I thought that was your motion.
No, I didn't agree with you.
Okay, well, when you're ready to make the motion, I thought that's what you...
I will move to approve resolution two-zero-two-four dash ten and proclamation.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. You know, um... Let's take a little quick, and you'll see. And you'll need to copy. I think for all things considered, it went pretty well. You have a, uh, a little command center set up there over the road.
Yep.
I mean, as quickly as it came upon, everybody. So, I know that there's, I think, uh, topic wells a little bit, we got some planning meetings of some sort, to kind of as a review.
Yeah.
Plans and things like that, so I'll look forward to that in the future.
Yep, we'll get changed by then.
Very good. Well, thank you, sir.
No problem. The weather first one wasn't too difficult to take care of.
Well, yeah, that was pretty wild. Just the way it came on, and so sudden, and of course, everybody was, you know, thinking they could go back to bed or finally go to bed. And here, what, about six o'clock in the morning, when they come by your guys' house? Did they ever decide whether or not they were simultaneous in two different spots, or if it was the same one, come multiple times?
I haven't heard.
I've read two stories.
Well, that's, that's what I've heard, because the damage on our road, and then you go over, and then there's a damage in between, so I'm taking it as two separate ones.
Yeah.
I've heard from the weather service, whether you felt it was actually three of them hit us that night or...
Well, the story that I read, it should have talked about only nine miles, but there's damage cleared out around Melver Lake, clear up to Shawnee Caddy Light. There's a lot further than nine miles.
There's definitely two different ones.
Yeah.
Start with whether there was two up north around Fisher's area or not. I don't know, I haven't heard for sure.
Yeah.
Some, some kind of old road through neighbors, you know, they can swing quite a ways or...
Right. I know there was a couple that were pretty fortunate, I think they're probably the thing that they've been over themselves. Multiple times, you hear about that one? There was a camper that got picked up.
Oh, yeah, people got that, yeah.
Yep.
The sheriff's, I talked about that.
Yeah.
They were remodeling their house, and they were in a camper.
Yeah. Yep, all right, thank you, Greg.
No problem, thank you, man.
Miss Webb?
Yes, sir.
You are up.
Who is it?
Okay, I have maps on there, so, uh, I have people coming in and I'm making maps again. Um, I don't think Melissa was making maps. Becky would charge for them, so I'm just wanting to make sure that I have approval to charge for them, and people, especially when they're coming in and making four or five maps of the same property and they want to split, and they want to see how it is, so, just want to get approval before I start charging people.
Have you reviewed kind of how it had been done in the past, the charging was?
Yeah, she was charging them three dollars each per map, so, um, I just figured I'd stick with that because that's sort of what people are used to paying, and I didn't realize that people were paying for them until I had a couple of wheelers come in, and how much do I owe you? I don't know, I have to go back and look and see what, what she was doing before, so...
Is it that we're just charging copies above, say one copy, or we charge for every copy?
She was, no, she was charging three maps, like, if somebody comes in, so, for example, I have a lady that came in and she wants to split her property, so she wants me to take a picture of her property and then split it, make the property lines, and so they'll tell me, and then I basically take a picture of that, print that out, and then she has the next parcel over and picture of that, print that out, so that way she can give it to the surveyor, and he comes in and knows where to do it.
Okay.
But I don't, like, I've had floodplain ones where I print out their format, and those I don't... You know, when somebody's being charged for flood insurance and they're not in the floodplain, and they can come in and I can show them where they're not in the floodplain, so they can give that to their insurance company, and I don't think we need to charge for those.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any issues with that, either of you, I don't know. I don't know if you have any calls or anything to change in regards to that?
It sounds like the policy was already there, we're just, it wasn't...
Well, I just, if somebody came and started complaining that I charged them three dollars for a map and they were splitting their property, and I just wanted to make sure I was upfront about it, so... Um, and then, uh, the other thing with the tornado and all the damage, you know, I would like to have for the next six months, those properties that go in there, I don't want to charge them a building permit if they're rebuilding, because a lot of them, you know, they lost the barn, lost the shed, you know, so just as long as they come in and get their permit, but I don't want to charge them their fee.
I think you might just need to have a few simple guidelines for that.
Well, that's, I want to make sure, like, have a list of the properties that were hit, so that way I can, you know, they're doing like for like.
Right, right. Same value. Yeah.
I don't have a problem.
Yes, I'm with you.
All right, we're all good, and Ryan and Heather?
I mean, we'd do the same thing if somebody, I would assume, if somebody had a property that burned down, we'd be doing the same thing, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, okay, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Chris wasn't here?
No, he took off.
About the time I start talking.
He don't like to, he don't like to talk, he, here he goes. He don't like to stay out here for the meeting, he's afraid he might get talked to.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I'm gonna assume you're here for this executive session.
Hi.
Do you have...
Yes, please.
Okay.
Probably ten minutes is fine.
What's that?
Probably ten minutes is fine if you want.
Okay. I would move to go to executive session under non-elected personnel, with Sheriff Wells, Mr. Bailey, myself, for a better than ten minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Ryan? He's trying to walk by.
I think that, I'll push him.
On the bottom one is my mess up. She was actually already trained. I was the train pay and stuff. She was a dispatcher before. She came back. She's been part time since 2021, I guess. So we didn't have to train her, didn't have to certify her. I should've made her pay in 2027 more since she was already completed the training portion. Rest of our business.
All right. I will move to approve the status payroll change brought forth by Sherrod Wells. That increases.
Second.
Motion to be seconded in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. There you are. That's the mission. Reserve any comment?
No, I don't want to be shot by it.
I will move to approve for disorder number 3962. The amount of 500, or sorry, $2,818 for ammunition paid to subset of law enforcement from the sheriff's.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
This is for the command van. The radio system, we obviously changed to 800s. This is to up that the just for batteries and kind of chargers for the command van in case we could have natural, like a tornado. We'd have extra batteries and everything after those that are searching. Plus, we're actually putting some of the older 800s in it. This is to help charge those as well. That way, say we have a search recipe or something like that, we can hand this out to the public to help us. The older radios, they're not worth much if something was to happen to them.
Right. Okay, I will move to approve for disorder 3961. The amount, is this bottom number the total?
Unfortunately, they're closed.
In the amount of $1,788 to be paid to Boner Old Solutions from the emergency management fund to up that emergency management.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
I think that is it. Giving a lot of the block work done.
What's that?
Giving a lot of the block work done.
Oh, that's.
Block guys are back, so they're.
Looks like that wall was closed in on the north side now. All the cells are in.
Yeah, they, all the cells are in. They moved quickly on that. Like one day they had almost all painted and done, but the lower part of it. So, yeah, welcome to the.
Is there people staying tonight yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. You're welcome to if you want to. Maybe a fundraiser.
Maybe later. I told you that when it gets open, that would be a good fundraiser is that you have to raise X number of dollars not to go to jail.
I don't know, like we could use you, for example. I don't know if people would pay more than that.
They might. They might. How much are you writing a check for?
Save here.
There's paper for the prep checks and whatnot.
I'll see what we've got. Put hoods too on that one.
And the DABRATS.
That's what shows on there.
I will move to approve for disorder number 3985. The amount of $629 to be paid to DABRATS for paper, those fullback. And paid, sorry, paid two DABRATS, but.
Second.
There's a break there for a second. Motion's been made seconded in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Schedule got made? Are you daily's Michelle?
So the no wait system is, I would say, 93% complete. Enough that it's going back today. It'll be put out on Facebook Works page, our website. You'll have options to scan or select a link for a complete county listing. And there's dropdown boxes as to what department you want to go to. The only departments that will be listed are the ones that are participating in it. We'll also give QR codes and the links out on each individual page. But each department head is kind of in charge of their own page, so it's going to be how everybody wants to set that up. So I'm super excited about that. I think it'll give the citizens a lot of flexibility and some of this, you know, staff too. I have people that come in, they need to talk about certain things. That way I can make sure that I have the schedule clear and I'm just focusing primarily on them and they don't have to worry about interruptions and things like that. So we set that budgets, different meetings, permits. So it's the clerk's office, land developments, registered deeds, and sheriff's department that are participating.
Yeah, it looks good. I clicked on the link and sent me there. It's weekend to tidy.
So, yeah, I'm super excited. I have.
Pretty simple.
On dailies, Doris over there about six weeks behind. That's been pretty consistent. So I don't see, I don't want to say that it can't be caught up real quickly. I just see that's a major struggle. This is starting to become a particular problem on getting our reports made up for our department heads to be able to do the budgets. We don't have accurate numbers. I know that actually will be a little bit anyways, but at least if I have these entered and balanced and entered reports, it's somewhat easier. I did not know if you guys would be willing to direct Linda and maybe take a break on the December dailies that don't affect our amounts right now to get that caught up.
When you say to take a break from the December dailies, what do you mean the December dailies?
There's still some corrections and things that need to be done and found to enter that part. That part doesn't be approved by general now because that was put in at the first of the year to do those reports so that the department heads can get their budget kind of going and know what we need to do to work with.
What all goes into the dailies?
What goes into them? Anything that the treasurer does, like their tax and moving and stuff. Landfill money, things that you take over there, candidate filings, fishing with the stuff. Once they enter those things into the funds, there's a handful of reports that are ready out. And then, once that's balanced on their side and received again, then an envelope goes back to our office. And we basically go through a check to make sure it went in the right fund, all of that stuff. We go through, once we balance on our end and hits, then it goes into the whole report system.
So when something's six weeks behind, that means that the sheets that we get that show we're right on a budget formula aren't even cost being correct.
And I went. Right. I visited with Laura on Friday and it was something that we were going to talk about today as well. I asked her to create a group with Linda, Colleen, whoever else in that office that is necessary to tackle these dailies and get them caught up. Because we've got to get them to speed. And I explained the need for that. Here we're going into a budget again. We don't have current information. But not only just that, but the daily operation of the county. You know, if you're over a month behind, you don't, you can't know, you know, where you're sitting in your budget. It's not possible. So I explained that to her on Friday. I feel like she was somewhat receptive to it. She did handle the other issues that I had. And if it's all the same to you, we could visit with her again today and just see if she's going to do that.
My concern with that though is the other girls don't know how to do them.
That's why I said that.
Colleen still kind of struggles her way through it as she's learning and seeing things for the first time. I don't think she's, I don't think it's fair to her to have to try and train somebody else in, per se. So that was my worry about even then grouping together and tackling it. I don't know if it's enough to keep up and have the speed and rate that we can tackle.
Right.
So who, who was doing the dailies before we got behind or who's doing the dailies now?
Colleen's doing the dailies.
So she's the only one that's doing the dailies?
Yeah.
And if she's gone or anything, then nothing happens.
But, okay, so correct me if I'm wrong here, but in my mind, I'm thinking a daily means it's done daily.
Right.
So how would it ever get behind? It bothers me when I hear six weeks behind. So you got to have more than one person knows how to do this. So if, and if Linda knows how to do it, she knows how to do the dailies and Colleen knows how to do the dailies. And there's two people there that could, and there's more staff members now is maybe it's time that they get them together and they're going, Laura, walk them by.
Yeah.
We'll get her in here. But to have them where they have that, get some of those people trained so they can do this. Because you can have somebody watch what you're doing as you're doing it and you'll learn a lot of just doing that. And then you, when you have the time, then you can sit down and train them on it.
Right.
But, yeah, you can't sustain being pined continuously. I mean, it bothers me again, like I said, it instead of saying what we're doing good in that office, we're saying what's bad. And if we're making a checklist of good and bad, I don't have many things on the good side right now. So get good at something. And we're doing a better job, I know, on tags and taxes. I've seen some positive comments there, but we still have to get that department better. And there's not a lot as commissioners that we're allowed to do because that isn't like an office. So they have to, they have to buy into it. We can help as much as we can.
I don't know if she has anything scheduled with them now since she's got time in there. Can't get it. I have no idea.
We'll find out here a little bit. I think I just want to grab her.
Did she turn it right up to you today?
There was a little trouble, but I don't, I mean, count because I was pulling out, she was coming in, so.
You'd like to keep an eye on that and let me know what the status is and I'll keep visiting with them. I'll just stay on it.
I'll ask Colleen to, I don't know what occurs when you get that many at a time because we should never get that many at a time.
I was up there this morning and she walked in, Colleen walked in with some papers. I don't know how many there was, but that's, that's what those.
Well, Laura just said that she passed it over like that into your office, so.
Yeah, it was during the weekend. But sometimes if there's errors in those, you're, you're keep it a stat before you bring it to us. It's a lot harder to fix a mistake if there's one in there and you're going to wait and then you just take it back.
The problem is, is again, we visited with this many a time. That is the treasurer's office. So we can visit with her, we can add pressure or whatever, whatever's necessary, but at the end of the day, that's her job to get done. And so I will continue to work with her in those terms regards to these dailies and express how important they are. It's just frustrating.
I just, I kind of go helpless when trying to direct departments and how to prepare the budgets. I don't have any avenue. I can't give them anything. The best that I can tell her is, do you have receipts that you spent? Add them up, go the rest again. That's all I can tell her. I don't have any else.
When is our next scheduled deal with Scott on the budget stuff?
Twenty nine.
Really? And what do we have on the twenty ninth to do with Scott?
It's supposed to be a wish list, supposed to be of.
So not where you need the other data?
It's got to be a rough estimate of what you think.
Is that the meeting that he's having with the department heads or is that the meeting with all of us?
I think he's going to be here for like an hour and then with us for the rest, three hours.
I mean, you guys are the one. Is that going to be helpful for you on the twenty ninth or not? I mean, if it's a waste of his time, we probably shouldn't have him come, but if it's.
I think there are some things that will be helpful just to kind of be imperative on how to lay things out and what to report and stuff. Since some of the department heads have done this and stuff before.
Because if you're getting nine or 10 of those envelopes a day, in four days, you'll be caught up. So by the end of the week, you should be caught up on dailies, which doesn't help for Bundy. But at least it'll get where they got a number where you can start getting closer to that. And maybe by the next meeting with him, I mean, you can have that meeting to do what you guys are doing there. And then the next one, we should have, the daily sheet should all be caught up. If everything was done, what we just talked about.
We'll stay on, check and see what's that got paid in. See if that's, if we can confirm. What else you got?
I used that some of the agents there.
Uh-huh.
Some tax roll agents there.
At least in order, that is sort of order. If I split this in half and give half to him, it'd have to be.
No, just remember, we'll just turn them upside down and put them back like we had them.
Yeah.
Well, these are personal property that I've got.
Really, no.
Is yours all personal property?
Yeah.
I think there's personal property, real estate, trucks.
If you're reading these comments, it tells you everything, like this one was sold and people moving and. Well, this is real estate. I wonder why my stamper was here now. I know why.
Yeah. They apparently got the papers out of there.
Yes.
See any alarming on yours?
I didn't see anything at all. Real estate thing. See anything to the market?
Nope.
I will move to approve the tax rule corrections. Tax year twenty twenty two.
So how would these are for?
What's this?
Oh, some of these are twenty one, yeah.
Well, okay.
They're different years. So they might just say, uh.
I'll just approve the tax rule corrections brought forward by the. Clear.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Motion carries. Uh-oh, you're drunk again.
Well, at least you don't look like a pumpkin today. Looks like a newborn green pea.
You know there's elections coming up, you can take it back. I know it. He's doing what happened with the sun down, I guarantee you, I can go down here and keep going.
Oh, Bill knows I'm picking on him. He'll be there to help me. I was going quicker till I looked up and seen that shirt and I thought I was in a construction zone, so I had to stop. I had to get some shades on. Here, I'll give you this stack anyway. What are you up to today, Bill?
Sitting up here to see what you do. What time is it supposed to be?
Did you hear that?
I was gonna hold him in contempt, but I realized I'm not good.
What brings you to our beautiful courthouse today?
Oh, just, I just drive by and said, you don't wanna go see what the wagons do. What kind of lies he's telling everybody.
These are on the bottom of that stack here.
These are on the.
On the bottom of that one, yeah. And then here's that other stack. Those are done, so when those are done, then that's ready.
Sweet.
Those are all done, yeah. There you go.
Hey, give you a chance to review the minutes.
I did.
Good invite, didn't you?
Nope.
Yo, I can't even take credit for it this week. I reviewed, didn't have to make one correction. Kudos. Move to approve the Monday, April fifteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Bills.
I've been through those too. I don't think I had any questions on them yet. There's one I had a question on, but I already went and checked on the answers, so.
Very good. Efficiency, love it. I'll move to approve the bills in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Carries. Are we missing anything?
Yep, my ten minute.
Yes, that's right. So I will move at this time to go into executive session with Mr. Bailey and myself for a matter of ten minutes under Don electric personnel.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Motion carries. You want me to open public comments back up when we get back? See his face lighting up.
Oh, yeah.